Booth. Six twenty-nine.
Anytime.
Okay, it's six thirty. Call to order the North St. Paul Arts and Culture Commission meeting for March sixth, 2024. I'm taking a look at the agenda. And Sarah, would you please take roll for us?
Absolutely. Tom Sonic.
Here.
Carrie Netto.
Here.
Amanda Black.
Here.
Sharon Clark-Williams. Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Laura String. C Yang.
Here.
And Lisa Wong, I'm sure is coming shortly.
And our Commission Secretary, Sarah Ling. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, now we will look for a motion to adopt the agenda as listed. If I hope everyone has had a chance to look through what we have here on the agenda today.
So moved.
So moved by Carrie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Amanda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. The agenda is adopted. Now, moving out to the approval of minutes. Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
So we're gonna, we're gonna do two. Can we do them separate? Okay. So the first one, the minutes from the regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting from February seventh, 2024. Did everyone get a chance to look those over? Any questions, edits, changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Now we'll look at the minutes from the special retreat. Very detailed minutes taken there. And I appreciate the visual as well, Sarah. You were busy, thank you. Anyone have any questions, thoughts? Anything you would want to add or change on the minutes for the special retreat on February seventh? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Amanda. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. We gotta get our new folks in here doing a motion or a second here one of these times.
So sorry.
Laura and Sharon, you gotta jump. You know what? We're always really slow when it comes to the motion to adjourn the meeting. I don't know why that is. So that would be a good one for you to jump on. Okay, item five, meeting open to the public. There's no one from the public here. And public hearings, we have no public hearings. So commission business action items and recommendations. So we're gonna do updates from subcommittees. With our first one, we have the project, our first subgroup is Project Snowy. And so with that, we will talk about the budget discussion and recommendation. Sarah has some information to share with us there. So why don't we first start with our, our project leads? And I would like to also add that Laura has graciously volunteered to help out with this team. So I think there's gonna be a lot of activity with this subgroup to execute the final stage of this project through this spring. And we'd love to get some thoughts about timeline from this group. I know we were looking at, in the past, at delivery of May-June 2024. So would love to kinda hear what your temporary timeline is for, for the first half of this year? And whatever other thoughts or needs that you have. And, and then we'll get into the budget discussion with Sarah. So C or Amanda, do you wanna give us an update on this?
I, I, I'll just provide a little brief overview and then Amanda and Sarah feel free to jump in. So since our last meeting, we did close artist, artist entries. And we've collected fourteen. We are proceeding with eleven. We have a total of seven purchases from businesses or folks. And then on top of our snowy for the city, so that comes to eight snowies.
Awesome.
Above and beyond our goal. So that's great. And, and so Amanda and I did meet a couple of times between our last meeting and today. And so we, we, one of those meetings included Sarah at, at the city level. And we're just getting, we're just discussing next steps as far as how to proceed in connecting artists with the businesses and getting them selected. And so one of the things that we are, that we've noticed is just that the cost of snowy through Tively Two has increased. And so we, we're, that, that is an item for discussion that's coming up. And also, not only that, but did you notice that we got published in the Star Tribune?
Nice little article.
So that's, you know, like more hits to come, hopefully. And, and so one of the things that we learned is that there is a, that from Tively Two, I believe Sarah had discussed with them as far as delivery with an anticipated date of May fourteenth. And, and so between that and May twenty-nine is when the art needs to happen onto the snowy. Cause five twenty-nine will be returned to Tively Two where it'll be clear coated. And so some things that we are looking to do next is Sarah, oh Sarah. Amanda will be helping with sort of proceeding with a Vomella design. And we can get that. And then, and then we'll also be helping with artist pickouts and artist agreements. And also looking for people to help out with when the snowies are here for when the artists do art at Public Works. And Amanda and Sarah are welcome to talk more about that too.
So we will have artists, once they have signed their agreement and scheduled with the businesses, once everything gets rolling, artists, artists will have a two-week window from about a Wednesday to a Wednesday to paint at Public Works. We are asking for help from the commission, from anyone who can help, I guess babysit, for lack of a better word.
Represent.
Represent, thank you. There is a better word. But for when Public Works is closed and artists would like to work after hours, we are allowing that. But we do need some city representation there. We will get better times because we are asking artists to sign up for their painting times. So it's not gonna be someone just sitting there when, just waiting for an artist. But as we get closer and we have those times open, we are asking for anyone to, if you have availability tonight, to let Sarah know, like when, when you would have availability over those two weeks. For, what do we say, after three thirty?
After three thirty until, I think we said seven. And then on weekends was gonna be eight to four.
Yep. So from three thirty to seven on weeknights and eight AM to four on weekends. After the two weeks, after the artists have finished, the snowman will go to Tively Two, as C said, for the clear coat. And then we are expecting a final delivery on June fifth. And we will have a large event that evening to reveal the final designs and make it a big community gathering.
So where would they be delivered on June fifth? And where would we have that event?
On June fifth, they are gonna go directly to the large snowy. And we will do a big reveal there. And then after, so June sixth or whenever Public Works is scheduling it, Public Works will then deliver the snowies to their final locations.
Super. So, and, and Public Works will deliver them when? Like how, how long will they be at the big snowy?
They're hoping to deliver them over the, so June fifth is a Wednesday. They're hoping to get them delivered the Thursday and Friday of that week.
Okay, so just, it'll only be at the big snowy for a day?
Yep.
And Carrie Erpemacher is working on a lot of promotional work for that. So hoping we can get some good video and photos during not only the painting, but that final event then as well.
Mark your calendars.
Yes. I will have, I will be available at the end of the school here though, so I got lots of weird. So if you could let us know when the artists sign up, I would be happy.
Absolutely, will do.
And what, so what would that, what, how will it work for like commissioners? Would we be, we get a key to Public Works?
Well, so I just found this out, so bear with me. It may change from Public Works to the Community Center.
Oh.
Still up in the air, it's a discussion with the city manager. Might actually be better.
Yeah.
So fingers crossed, we're gonna do that. But if either way, we'll get access, so Public Works would be a key code to get in. We would like, give you guys the key code. Community Center's a key, so we'd have to figure out logistics of that. But either way, you would get access to it after hours.
We can do whatever we want.
Sarah, do you know if it's at Community Center, what the answer may be for spray painting?
Still no. Ventilation isn't good in there, so that wouldn't work.
But airbrushing, okay.
Airbrushing is still okay, yep. And I think the plan would be that Public Works would bring in some plywood so that it's a better surface for them to work on. We'll put the drop cloth over that and then have them all work in there. It's all one space. I think it's a better location, so.
And we don't have to move them in and out of everything?
That's great. And just stay, yeah, so.
Is it going to be in the gym?
Yes.
Yes.
So I will get confirmation on that here later this week and we'll go forward from there.
Could we get, I don't know.
Remember how we used to visit this idea about like having the community come like watch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or look at them in progress or something, I don't know.
Yeah, we were gonna have it at right downtown, right?
Do we have a webcam? Can we livestream the painting of the snow?
I can, I think that's a great idea. I'll ask. Cause I don't know if we do, but we should be able to organize something to be able to do that.
And when we do, let the artists know that they're on camera.
Yes.
I like this.
So, this is fantastic. So we had, you know, the, from some of the old planned steps related to this key initiative was to build the buyer group. That's done. Execute call for artists, done. So define artist selection and completion timeline. What about that?
I can speak to that. So we tomorrow, over the course of tomorrow and Friday, I'm gonna be sending emails to the businesses with a packet of all the artists they can select from.
Okay.
We're gonna give them a week to kinda look that over. And I'll start taking their choices on the eighteenth of March. That way, they all have a fair chance. It's not who opens the email first, like Amanda pointed out. It's, they all get a fair chance over a week to look it over. I'll take their choices over the course of that week, of the eighteenth. And then on the twenty-fifth, we'll start assigning the artists, reach out to the artists, get them connected to businesses and get the agreements going. So should be wrapping up here with that in a couple of weeks.
Okay, excellent. And again, so they could pick an artist and say, I like this artist or what they're doing, but I wanna change the design a little bit, right? They can.
A little bit. We're, we're, we're not expecting a full redesign of snowies, but if they wanna change minor aspects of it, then that is.
Okay.
Between the artists and business.
Yes.
Sure, okay. So, great. And what's the, so now it's just, it's just up to those businesses. I mean, we had so much conversation a couple of years ago about, you know, who's gonna pick the artists and all that stuff? But it's just up to the businesses to do it, yeah.
And what if they select the same artist?
They're, we are asking them to choose their top three in rank choice. If we run into the situation, it's kind of a first come, first served as far as if you get your first choice, first person at it gets it.
Great. Well, this is excellent. We had this old item here of defining business association involvement. Are they just not involved? Okay. So cut that. Write-up purchase agreement, that was done, right?
Yep, they're all signed and back to the businesses.
Excellent.
Yep.
Just great progress. What about defining the programming?
That was done a while ago. Way before we started, so.
So that's all done? And walking map, I guess that will depend.
That one is a work in progress as we.
Work in progress.
Cause.
Once the businesses select, we're asking them to choose location when they select artists?
Yes. So I've heard back, I've already heard back from some of them. Some of them are still up in the air, so.
We have one, possibly two, being donated back to the city. So we'll plan to put those probably in a local park.
Well, and that one last thing that was hanging out there was reviewing with the city council. I know we've done that. Do we, is there anything more that we need to do with the council?
No.
We're done on that?
Yeah.
Okay. This is fantastic. Great progress. Good work.
To speak to the budget side now.
Okay.
So as C mentioned, the cost of the statues has increased since we initially talked to Tively Two.
In your packet on page fourteen?
Yep, page fourteen of your packet. Sarah graciously put together all of the expenses associated with this. So we have transportation listed there, drop class for the actual painting, artist stipend, the clear coat and the plaques of slash Vomella. We are at a deficit of five thousand five seventy-five, although we do have three thousand in our budget, so that.
Two thousand five.
So two thousand five seventy-five is what we are over budget by.
Wait, how much?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Oh, hey, okay.
Last time, there was a discussion that there may be a resident or business, excuse me, that wanted to donate. Did that come through?
It has not.
Okay.
Well, the premier has, is, oh donating.
Cash.
Oh, yeah.
There was a mention of that.
Right, that's right.
So we've got thirteen eighty left on our paint night after we covered our four artists. We've done our branding and communication. Utility box racks and art cart. If we, well, I guess we could even, who wants murals a little bit? If we just evenly spread it across all of our remaining land?
I'll say the paint night, I thought exactly what you're thinking. That's actually in the event budget.
Are paintings in the event budget?
Yeah.
Oh.
So we can't pull it from that?
We can't pull it from that.
Correct.
Wait, isn't this an event?
No. The reveal will be an event.
And that doesn't cover these costs?
Correct.
Those costs are not listed here.
Yes.
Well, we've, we have twelve thousand in murals. So I'm comfortable taking a larger chunk out of that. I think if we get our mural group going, I mean, if we had ten thousand available in the mural budget, I think we're in pretty good shape. So we could take two thousand from there. That, I would propose that.
Maybe split the rest between branding and communication and utility box racks? I feel like we were over budget on utility box racks last year. I'm sorry, C.
C already spent it all.
I think that's fine as far as utility box. And then like, say like if, you know, towards the end of the year, it turns out that, you know, other places have more money and utility boxes need it, maybe we could reallocate again.
That's true too, yeah. That's what I'm thinking too, is we can always swap back if we need to. I mean, art cart, I don't think we've ever spent two grand on the art cart here. So there's.
I do need baggies though. I think we have enough for baggies.
Would a thousand be enough? I think they got them on special at Costco.
Other than that, you can have whatever.
Okay. Get a few baggies for a thousand dollars, yeah. Yeah, so do we wanna say that, those two thousand for murals and then?
Well, if we're gonna, do we have to decide what it is? Or can we just go over budget in that category and then?
I think we need to reallocate now. And I will say, there's a chance internally, there's some discussion with the finance director on if we can ask for money from council for this. So there's a chance we might not have to pull ours. But in the event that we do, I wanted to get a vote today, so we're ahead of the game.
Okay.
Gee, do we know anybody on council?
So I will, can I call for a vote? Is that, no, that's a.
Wait, what are you gonna like?
We're taking two thousand from the murals. And what do we need seventy?
You're making a motion that.
I am making a motion to pull two thousand from murals. Let's do three hundred from branding and communication. And then what's the remaining, four seventy-five? Two seventy, two seventy-five from the art cart. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna leave, let them have it.
And I could see us easily using that, like the utility boxes.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table.
I second.
So, C seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor of making those reallocations on the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. This is excellent work. Great progress. It's exciting. It's exciting, all those dates. And then June fifth, that's the big day? Okay, then that's a Wednesday, okay?
It is also the night of our Arts and Culture Commission meeting.
Yes. So there was discussion on if we wanna move the, our meeting to a different week? Or if we wanted to just do it all on the same day?
I think you should move it.
Let's move our meeting to the big snowy.
Well, but also, does anybody know like what's the day of graduation?
Well, let's look into that and we'll come back next meeting and talk about what we wanna do for June.
Well, could it be that the event happens from five to seven and we just happen to miss the last half hour? I would like you to be here from five o'clock until nine o'clock that evening.
Wait, what?
As in like attend the event and then come back for the meeting here?
You know, knock out.
Or we could shorten it.
Yeah.
We can move our meeting, all right?
Yeah, we can.
I imagine this unveiling is gonna be filled with revelry and.
I hope so.
Wild New Orleans-style debauchery.
You can be our media personality again. I don't think C or I wanna talk to media.
Okay.
I mean, we are gonna like get dressed up in our snowy.
Yes, yes.
So do we wanna talk about, are we okay if we move? I mean, once we get into June, things get kinda real busy, real fast at all, so. I'm just checking the district calendar right now. June fifth is the last day of school, so I don't know if that is also graduation or not. But if it is, that's a conflict, for me at least.
Well, it's probably a conflict for a lot of people, even our attendance.
Well, let's find out, cause then we can also move snowy maybe a day to like the Thursday. So let's look at that.
If that is the case then, that'll determine whether we need to move our meeting or not, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll add that to the agenda for next meeting. We'll talk about it and go from there.
Yeah, next meeting, it'll already be April. And then we'll only be two months away, so. Okay.
I think we definitely need to get some of those little tiny lawn signs and be like, something is coming. And then like promoted with those, you know?
That's in somebody else's budget.
Fair.
Okay. Anything else on snowy? Excellent work, C and Amanda and Siri.
I do wanna say that, hopefully you guys noticed, our snowy is not in front of City Hall right now. He is down for repairs, so he'll be gone until, or they, it, snowy will be gone until it comes back for the artists to be painted, to paint it. So it's down, but they're doing that for free for us, so that was a huge win. People hanging on it was mostly.
Oh, his arm fell off?
It was cracked in the arm, so it's just gonna happen, but, yeah.
Okay, so moving on, murals. We have no update.
We haven't met, so.
We have not met, so we, we should met, meet, we should meet this month. Utility boxes, so, and so murals, so that team, we have three commissioners on that team. And so Sharon, I'm looking down at you and C and is there a, is there a subgroup that you would like to be part of in this? Because we'd be happy to have your help on one of these subgroups if you're interested, but.
I certainly will. That's why I'm here.
Yeah, yeah. I'd love to get you active. So what I'm thi, well, is there anything that you're interested in? I'll start there and then.
No, I mean, it does not have to be anything specific.
Okay.
I'm open. Unless you have something really bad hidden that I don't know about.
Well, I think that you could, you could help with utility boxes.
I think Laura, yeah. So just wanna make sure that we're not reaching a quota, so I know Laura.
Laura, you're joining utility boxes? Okay, so you're gonna be, well, okay, then I'll back, I'll back out of utility boxes. Well, well, well then, we, if we do that, cause Lisa doesn't count.
Yeah.
So we could have, do you wanna, you could join Laura and C on utility boxes?
Certainly.
Wanna do that? Is there a?
Of course.
Okay, so I'm gonna update that team.
We're already in, so I'm just gonna look at the ones joining.
Yeah, sorry, Laura, I didn't realize you were already involved in that one. Okay, so C, Laura, Sharon, and then Lisa W is on that one, so she doesn't count towards our commissioners. Great, so any, I know there's updates here. So C, do you wanna give us the update on that?
Sure. So between last meeting and this meeting, we, we developed a program for the high school switchgear utility box. And so that outline went to the commissioners involved and, and to Lisa, and also to Sarah, to city. And it sounds like there has been no, like it's been, it works, it sounds like. And so progress so far is that Sarah and team has already developed a webpage with the, the program outline and also the application for the high schoolers to participate. Lisa helped hook us up with someone from ISD six-two-two, Lynn, and, and Lexi, who we met with this past Monday. And they, I believe are, if they haven't already, reaching out to North High to get this program started and to promote it as well, so. Yes, so Lexi has already reached back about, you know, like if there was a poster. And I did share with her like our tentative timeline as well. And so just looking to hear back from them. And so one of the perks of this utility box program is that we are offering the winners or the people we select for the art, we are gonna give them out a hundred fifty dollars from our budget as an award for their art. And we are looking to approve up to two winners. And so next step is for Lexi to talk to the, to the art teachers also to see if we could get them on board to help with like mentoring or helping with, you know, like digitizing any physical art that they might have and also to help promote and support. As far as timeline, it would be, it would be like a two and a half week window where, where students would get the opportunity to submit their art. And then it would come back here where we would do a once-over with the subcommittee and then it would go to the city who would then promote it out for community voting. And that is where we will get the selection of two. I should also say that the, the subcommittee will decide on the semifinalists that would then go up for the final community voting, just so that they don't have like hundreds of options if that is, ends up being the case.
What do you mean by community voting?
So putting it up for the public to vote on. So we're not saying like you have to be in North St. Paul, but you know, like we'll promote it through our social media channels.
For the final artwork pieces that the high school students submit?
Yes, after the subcommittee picks out like eight semifinalists or something. And then it will go to the community to vote on, who we will award.
I, I, um, is that, I don't like that.
What, what is your con- What is your concern there?
The idea of having something that I created as a high school student going out to a full, like, website to be voted on, it feels like a popularity contest to me. And I, I worry about putting high school students in that kind of a position. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm overthinking it, I don't know. I, I think having a community vote on the initial round of art, right, and then the council, to be able to say, hey, I put my art forward, I was selected as a finalist by my community, and then I was selected as an artist by a committee, a commission of community leaders, I think has more cachet, and it would be more for high school students. But that's my sole, my only opinion, so, or only my opinion, there we go.
Okay.
Can it be anonymous?
Like, not attaching a name to the art? Is that, would that change your thoughts?
Well, it's a little better, but I still, it still is like the whole, hey, Tom, vote on mine, because, you know, you're popular and all of your friends are gonna vote on mine, so if you do it, then all of them will, and it just, I have a, I have a, I don't know, a high school group thing, hive mind reaction, is what I'm having. But I have a high schooler, so maybe that's why.
Would it be worth checking with the school district or the contact, Lynn?
I, you know, like, hearing your concerns, I can see where you're coming from. I would, how about if it was where, where it was, like, the subcommittee does narrow it down to a set so that it's not like a huge amount of options, and then the, and then it goes to community voting, where then, you know, like, I don't know, the, we'll, we'll look at the top and then we'll pick from there, is that something, like, I don't want to put numbers, because I know Tom had mentioned, like, well, what if we only had, like, 10 submissions? You know, like, so, can't say, like, we want to be like, oh, we'll pick the top 10 when only 10 submitted, so.
I guess, is there another way that we can get the community involved? I think having a community vote on art on a website feels more like a drive-by interaction and not really an in-depth, engaged interaction? If we want community involvement, could it be something different? Or is that why you're having the community voting? Is it for community involvement?
Yes.
So, I don't, I wonder if there's a better way or a different way we could do that? I don't know. Maybe I'm weird.
No, I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I have a high schooler as well. And I don't know, I, I mean, I feel like I could go either way. I mean, you know, you could have, you know, to Lisa's point, I mean, if you put them on the website and said, vote for your favorite thing for this thing, and had no names attached to it, they're just voting for the, the design. And so, no one would know unless kids are telling each other what they're, which they would do anyway.
I mean, it was one thing when it was stock photos, when we did the utility boxes, like, that made sense. You know, like, what do people like, what do they want to look at? I guess that's what you're getting at with this too. I don't know. As a mother of four, and a grandmother of five, I think that you're, it would put the children under pressure. I, looking back at my own experience at high school, I, I can tell, even if somebody had a great piece, if they weren't cool, or whatever they call it now, they wouldn't stand a chance.
But that's, that's maybe if we were just allowing the high school students to vote. As a greater community, not everybody, I wouldn't, I won't know any of these people.
No, sure. But I got a sneaking suspicion most of the voters are gonna come from North High, because I don't think most of the public will be even aware that it's an opportunity for them to become involved.
Well, when there's money involved, especially.
Well, and we do try our best to reach out.
Oh, for sure. It, it's, it's just, people are busy in their lives, they don't pay attention as long as, you know, the streets are shovelled and the grass is green in the park in the summer, it's like, okay, my community is running great. I do worry about the feelings of the students. And maybe they're old enough that they can have, that they should start learning this is what the real world is like, but that is a, I think, a reasonable concern to be worried about their emotional well-being.
I understand that. I guess, even if you arrange it this way that Carrie recommended, with all of the pieces out first, and then narrowed down, and then commission chooses from that, you'd run into the same thing, right?
Well, maybe if, well, I have one question about the public voting, they would not know the tally. So, you wouldn't know if you only got three votes versus somebody else got 200 votes.
Yeah, right.
So, in that respect, then I see that is no different than the commission choosing.
I also think about, you know, we have a, we have a model sort of out there right now for this type of thing, which is the fire department poster contest. I mean, the fire department is part of the city, and, and they solicit, you know, fire safety poster art from kids from all the different local schools, and they submit their things, and then I think the, and I think the fire department picks the winners, right?
You see the difference there being is that it's all the junior school kids versus the high school kids, and that's when you do get it to the popularity contests.
Well, I think you could definitely have that with kids all the way up to 8th grade in some of these schools too, and I think, and, but the, the point is, is that you're taking, the, the voting is done by the, the fire department, so the equivalent would be like the Arts Commission doing the voting on the winners.
Well, and these kids know that they're competing. I mean, if they're that upset about failing, or not getting chosen, or not being on a utility box, then they probably wouldn't have the guts to compete, is kind of my view on it. Like, they know that they might not get it, too, so. I mean, without them seeing the, the tally, without them seeing the percentage, maybe there's a way online where it's open to community voting, but they get to pick their top three choices, because then they don't even know some of these kids. And then we just take the highest percentages for the top two winners.
Rank choice.
I think the biggest thing is that the losers don't know by how much they lost, because this is a situation where it can be campaigned. And so, if you don't know that, then I think that puts it in a different, like, than it's like any other competition.
Yeah, because presumably, from the high school, the kids that participate are gonna know what's up. They're gonna know that you go online to vote, and they're gonna know that they could win money if they win. So, though, whoever did art is going to, whoever submits a design is gonna tell their friends to go on and vote for their thing, early and often.
Is there a, a way to, like, limit how, how much someone?
Yep, it's by email address, so we can limit to one per email address.
And do you confirm email addresses?
Do I confirm them?
Like, is there?
As in.
Like, make up email addresses, is what you're saying?
Yeah, well, they have to be valid email addresses to get into our system.
I'm filled up.
Oh, no, we do not confirm them.
Maybe Lisa's right, maybe talking to the representative at the school for ideas. And I also, you know, I think we're a cool group of people, and being able to convene or to convey an award like this to high school students, to, we could have them come in and be like, listen, girl, and, sorry. But to have, have them come in and be like, hey, here you go, this is your great award, thank you so much for participating, I think that would be more meaningful than, oh, look, I've won the most votes on the city website. I don't know. That's my two cents. Thanks for listening. We can still have them come in, even if there is a vote on a website. That's true. Yeah, I just. So, I can, I can see where this is where we can split the babies, if children don't know their tally. Yeah. That's a positive, and then they still can come in at the end and receive their awards. And we still can consult with the school district as it's in their best interest. I mean, I think it all can be done. Sounds good. And it, I think it can work.
Wait, what's the, what's, I missed the part about having them come in. You mean, just for, like, when the winners are chosen, having them come into the Arts Commission, okay. So.
So, what was that?
So.
What was the determination on that?
Next, this is to talk with, maybe Lynn, and, you know, see what her thoughts are.
Lynn and Lexi.
Yeah.
I think they'll have the best guidance as to what is the way that it's currently handled.
Yeah.
Rather than, I mean, I know how I would have handled it. But did the sharks survive, or survived, but I don't think that's really the best way anymore. And they may have good suggestions of how to do this if the public vote in a positive way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and because, like, the initial thought was, you know, like, to narrow it down via the subcommittee, right, or however you want to do that, so, like, so, the initial cut itself, like, we're not picking out who's popular either from that, so, you know, like, we.
Well, Sharon, you're on the utility box subgroup now, so.
We can discuss some more.
We can, yeah.
Well, don't worry, I was not attacking.
Yeah, no, that, that's a good feedback, so next steps, I will reach out to Lynn and Lexi on that.
Yeah, it's good discussion.
And so, as far as, like, the timeline for the rest of it is that we hope to wrap up, you know, like, depending on how we conduct the voting or decision-making, we would like to at least make sure that we figure out an award, like, who's getting awarded by mid-May, so that the, so that they, you know, like, if it's a senior, then they could at least, we could make sure it's still, like, the school year for them. And then, it takes about a month for wrapping, so maybe around, like, mid-June at the latest, hopefully, for wrapping, so about four weeks.
What's, what was the estimated cost on this one, do you remember?
That was 1,300, 1,400?
Yeah, it was just, I think just shy of 1,400.
Yeah.
And then, and then the awards are in addition to that?
Correct.
Coming out of that budget, yeah. Gives you an idea, you know, you can use up that utility box budget pretty quick.
Did we at one point talk about having the utility boxes painted rather than?
Yeah, mhm.
Is that something we might want to consider for this?
Yeah. I mean, for this one? Probably not for this one.
I wouldn't do it for this one.
Yeah, but, but for others, yeah, we sure could. I just think, you know, the, the muralist that did the thing down here, I mean, he could whip one of those things out in an hour, probably. Right. Yeah. Okay, anything else on utility boxes?
Not unless you guys have anything to add.
No, I, I, well, I, I know that you did a lot of work, C and Lisa, appreciate your involvement there in lining up that meeting. We had a lot of emails flying around back and forth over the last month, and, but made really good progress, so.
Yeah, I, I wanted a special thanks to Sarah, she was out sick, but she still, like, really did.
Sarah.
She did the, I know.
Sarah always takes care of us.
Even when she's sick, which I feel terrible about.
Okay, art cart, Lisa, any update here?
One of Amanda and I are doing one more.
Okay.
Those projects. We'd like to ask that we notice all four volunteers and we'll hopefully get a few.
Did.
I would like to get babies ordered to organize the paintbrushes, so that we've got them by size rather than just all dumped together.
Okay.
What do we do? Do we need to make a motion to approve that?
I don't think so. Baggies are the new toilet paper rolls for.
You still have those? Those are long gone. I know. They stand there for a while.
Lisa, are you, are you thinking, like, quart-size baggies? Gallons, okay.
Great, so Lisa, R, and Amanda, you have something planned to?
I think 18th was correct. Yes.
And then we have paint night.
Yes, Carrie and I will plan on April. If you could make sure that, that date works. I mean, who's 17th we talked about for our next one, so I can get the art dated for that and submitted, so we can start getting that published. Let me know if that dates work. And I would like to send a thank you to Sarah for organizing the four paint nights with Jeremy and Swayta. I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, so we have June 17th, July 11th, August 29th, and October 24th. So, we kind of set.
So, will they, are they keeping on campus, or are they doing, I thought they had different projects.
They are, yes. April 17th, the Wednesday, that is available, so I will reserve the building now, yes. Do we want everything to be the same for registration purposes, $10? Same number of registrants, all that? Easy, okay, I can do that.
That's great, and then, let's just see.
You know what I'm thinking, in terms of polls, I would like to lower it to 8 to 12 instead of maybe 8, maybe 10, maybe. Just for this one?
Just for this one? Okay.
Oh, graduation is on June 12th.
It is, okay.
If we move the snowy reveal to the 6th, is that still okay?
Probably. It's just, yeah, I gra.
I know it's bumping up against graduation, but.
But it's better than having it on the same night, because then I just wouldn't be able to attend, and anybody who's graduating wouldn't be able to attend.
We keep it on the 6th, that stays out of the way of grad parties then, too?
I think so, because it's.
It's Thursday.
So, that should be okay.
And then, so, do we want to move our meeting from the 5th to the 12th that month, then, the week after?
Oh, yeah, that's true, too. I know, we could, or, or the vice chair could take.
Yes.
I'm open to moving or keeping, either way. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I would say, from my perspective, keep it, just for ease of scheduling and everything, but if anybody has any other opinions, that's fine. Okay, we'll keep it then. All right, Carrie, you're in charge then.
This whole thing kind of runs itself at this point.
It really does.
And I'm updating our whole work improvement plan for 2024 as we go. Yeah. Anything else on paint night? So, do we need volunteers, or that's gonna be part of a bigger conversation, not volunteers?
We will need volunteers to, or at least a volunteer to be at each of those paint nights that we have with the four, so we don't need to decide that today, but just want to get that on your radars for, as we get closer.
Great, so we got, do we see more of these happening outside? So, we have the April, then we have the four more with the other artists, do we see that as being the full year for these? Goes through October, I think, okay. It's fantastic, so we got it all scheduled, look at that, we're all green on this. Develop programming, we got that. And then, the only other thing we had left out there was promotion of this, like, how can we, you know, promote it more to get more people? And then, the only other thing we had left out there was promotion of this, like how can we, you know, promote it more to get more people?
I think we're slowly picking up this momentum.
Good.
Well, it's doubled in size.
Oh, that's.
We still don't have a lot of people, but if you get too big.
Right.
It felt like the last one was a pretty good size.
It's good.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
There were some people that needed some extra handling, but I didn't feel like you were fully directed.
Well, I think you did really well getting it established, and, you know, some things just take time, like the Art Cart or anything else.
Yes, sixteen.
Okay, Autumn Arts Festival. So Amanda and I met to give some additional recommendations to Carrie for that. Anything you would want to add on that, Amanda? Otherwise, I know Sarah's got some stuff she wants to cover.
Just the same thing as Sarah, I have the Community Craft is an additional handout that you've got. You received those images and choices last month, but the costs are now listed on the third page here. And so I'd like to get a vote on which project we would like to go forward with. If anyone would like more explanation on the projects, I can do that, too.
Yeah, I, these are, these are also good. I'm, I love option two. Oh.
The most expensive one.
The most expensive one, right.
Well, it'll be mid if, if we have the acrylic paint and paintbrushes in the Art Cart or from Paint Night that we could use for this. Okay.
Yeah.
I like option one.
Would everyone be open to a raising hands vote?
A what?
Raise your hand to vote, kind of thing?
I said raising canes, I'm like. Chicken tenders, yeah, okay, what, what does this have to do with? Yeah, anybody have any thoughts?
I guess the only thing that we do use is the heart hands. They're going to be a lot more opaque, so just letting people know that it wouldn't look quite like what we see here. Because more of it passed down.
Oh, sure, nothing's going to look quite like, nothing's going to look exactly like what we see here. These are just examples.
But each one of those would just become a, you know, so, but yeah, either way, it would, it would look good, it would be vibrant, it would be.
And I am volunteering myself to assemble post-project, whatever project we choose.
Great.
Yeah. So who would like option one? The photographs with the heart hands. Oh, raise your hand.
We got three.
Three, option two?
How many votes do we get?
One. Option three?
Did you vote?
I didn't vote, so I was going to say option two is kind of my preference. But I think I'm leaning that way because honestly, option one, I feel like I might be stuck as a photographer and I don't want to be. But if anyone else has a nice camera and would be willing to, I'm stuck between the two. Sarah, what would you vote?
I.
She's a non-voting member.
I'm a non-voting member.
Well, you can go.
My preference is two, I think it just lends for more creativity.
Sure.
So, yeah. Although I do think there could be space to do something like option one at a different event or a different time. I don't think we should completely rule it out, but I would go number two.
Yeah, for option three, I guess I will go with number two. Because my preference is for all three.
Okay.
Yeah, I like all of them. See, well, do, do.
So let's do.
Option one next year.
Yeah.
Keep doing stuff.
Or at another event this year.
Great.
Okay.
Hang onto this.
Then I would like to.
Sorry, did you say that Autumn Arts Festival is two days or one day?
One day.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, sorry. Um.
Continue.
So I would like to motion to spend a hundred and one dollars on canvas and wood panel for the Community Craft.
Do we have to make a motion for every penny that we spend, or?
Yeah.
Well, it is in the events, yes.
Yeah.
But this event specifically is kind of under our purview.
I think if we just take a vote for this, it's better to be safe than sorry, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
Sorry.
You made the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, a hundred and one dollars or whatever it takes to do option two.
Amanda, would you be willing to send me?
Yes.
Exactly what you're looking at, and then we'll get it ordered. Fantastic, thank you for all, thank you for putting that all together.
Does anyone have an opinion? So this option two would be, I think, just the one twenty-four by thirty-six wood panel. Where would we like to display that publicly post-event?
That's how big that is?
I think we should approve doubling that and make like two or three panels.
Yeah, what if we get way more than these?
Well, I don't know what the one on here is, I was looking at getting a hundred small canvases. And about ninety-six would fit on a twenty-four by thirty-six, so.
What if we make smaller ones that we could hang on the walls?
Well, these are already just two by, two and a half by two and a half inches.
Like we could divide this panel into four?
Oh, sure.
Then we could hang it on the walls downstairs, maybe?
I kind of like the impact of it, of it all on one, though, yeah. And so, but I think that we'd still have somewhere to hang it, don't you think?
Yeah.
You could hang them in here.
Yes, it's so boring.
Yeah, it's so tan.
Yeah, this is only eighty panels, so.
Yeah, we should, we should like.
It's a little slightly larger.
Shouldn't we have three panels this size?
I think you could, yeah, I mean, there's, there's potential that you could have a lot of these things.
That would triple the budget.
I said that we triple the budget, so three hundred and three dollars.
Well, how many, you said that's ninety-six canvases? So how many people would we need to paint for three? I'm not good at math, so excuse me.
About two and a half by two and a half inches.
Thank you. Do we think realistically we could get two hundred and eighty-eight people to do that?
At the Arts Festival?
Just playing devil's advocate.
I think some people did two or three birdhouses, right, last?
And a lot of people did several snowman pictures.
I think at the, at the Arts Fest, I don't know if you'd get two hundred and eighty-eight, but I think at the Arts Festival, if you said, if you had it out somewhere prominent, and you said, hey, this is what we're going to, here's what we're doing, you know, we want everybody to participate, do anything you want, and we're going to hang these things up somewhere in City Hall or something like that, then I think you'd get a lot of participation.
Also, do we have our event for Touch a Truck Night or whatever it's called? What is it?
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
The car show.
Won't it be? I thought we always go to that.
Yeah, it's.
Not that one, but it's the, just, I thought we went.
June fourteenth is the car show, and it's on here.
Yeah, that is the Touch a Truck, isn't it? Or at least they had something.
Stop laughing, it's Touch a Truck, it's the world name of the thing.
It's not dirty.
It's not.
So they washed the truck?
No.
No.
Not just the kids, they have things that are open to us in front of them going to.
Okay, where are we, we got sidetracked here.
Okay, so what about a compromise of two panels worth? I do two, but it feels like a good place to land.
And a element of design that we need taught.
Well, do we have, so this, so the Arts Festival has no budget, right? I mean.
It's the event budget.
It's the event budget, correct?
It's what?
The event budget.
Events budget.
That Carrie's managing, yes.
So, well.
Not this Carrie.
When we look at what has been put aside for that event, there's plenty of money left over from what had been planned, at least depending on what else they decided to do. It's out of our hands, so.
There's less than a thousand remaining.
So be still, so if it's three hundred dollars, we should be okay.
Well, are we talking about tripling or doubling?
Tripling.
I would just like say, if you'd like to make a trip tick, it doesn't have to be this wide. So, I mean, you're envisioning a trip tick of three of these, and some people are saying, well, it's too many people. Well, we could, it could be a more narrow trip tick.
I love that.
You can have three of the things, three of the panels.
Yeah, if you really want three panels, I can find a different sized panel and still get two hundred canvases.
I think.
Is that the compromise?
I think that sounds good. Here, here.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Hromph.
So Amanda, I'll just, if you send me that stuff, I'll get it to Carrie and we'll go from there. Awesome.
Yeah, I didn't get a hromph out of that guy. Anybody? Blazing Saddles, I didn't get a hromph out of that guy. Okay, so then we're talking two hundred bucks, and we do three panels, and we, maybe we hang them up in here. I'm, I'm, I'm here, here for that.
How do we go about, because I think wherever we choose to display this has to go through council, correct?
Hmm, I don't know. I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can talk to him about that.
So we don't need to like go through an official process of having this art displayed somewhere?
No.
I remember voting on decor.
That's because there wasn't an Arts Festival.
We voted on that.
Oh, no, I guess I did.
Yeah, between myself or Lisa, we can talk to Brian, too, and figure it out.
I like it all.
Yeah, if it goes in here, that's great, I can look at pretty things, then. Other things, it looks like the yellow highlighted information, Sarah, is that what Carrie needs an answer for, from us?
Yes, she would like recommendations, the stuff in green is stuff that's new from last meeting that was based on recommendations from the Subcommittee.
I have, I thought we could also not make prize recommendations for bingo.
Okay.
I just.
Okay.
We have no recommendations.
None, okay.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we'll give away for bingo, ham?
Coach bags.
She wanted art-related recommendations.
Okay.
Well, do we have pencils left?
We do.
Yeah, what?
Our pencils.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I will say the Parks Commission, they voted on like jump ropes and frisbees and stuff like that, so our pencils might go compared to that.
Well, everybody gets their own miniature canvas.
You know, I just.
We could add the pencils to all of the prizes.
A ticket to Paint Night.
There you go.
Community art projects, we just decided that.
Yep.
So we're good there? All right, feel good about that?
Art Cart activity, I think Lisa and I can discuss that at our next meeting.
Yeah, Carrie doesn't need that.
She just wants to know it for promotion purposes, doesn't need to get details or anything, just kind of what we're thinking.
Isn't that the one where you recommended doing stamps, mutual stamps?
It doesn't have to be that one, but we can make it that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Stamps, okay.
Do the stamp making for that night.
Okay.
Okay, look at this, we're just cruising today. And then education, any recommendations on organizations before we start the outreach for education, community outreach?
Yeah, and just to clarify, this is for inviting local groups to come, maybe set up a tent for a couple hours, talk to people about, you know, either their dance troupes or different paint classes, things like that. I know last time Amanda had some good recommendations, one of them, as you see there, the Minnesota Book Arts does not do any more community outreach, that was a bummer, I was really excited about that. But, yeah, if there's any other suggestions or groups you think would be great to have, reach out to, to have there, I'd love that.
Compass, I think we had them present and they work with youth.
Okay.
Would the Rotary be interested?
Potentially, I can put that on the list.
I don't know if Spring Board does anything, but they, I don't know if I recommended them last time, but maybe.
Yeah, I'll add that.
I'll have to think some more on that, I feel like I hit something right.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and we, of course, have time on that, so.
Okay.
Certainly, if you think of stuff, let me know.
Rolling around the back of my head and I can't get it out.
Tom, as someone who's born theater side, there is one Art Festival.
Ashland Theater.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, yeah, but one of the events that I do, they have a small group that does like a little traveling theater show during the event. And so they'll walk around and just do like a little, one quick act, quick thing around. I don't know if there's anyone who would do that.
I like that idea.
But maybe Ashland?
Okay.
I can do some Shakespeare soliloquies.
Let's do it. Do you have a Shakespeare costume?
Yeah, I think I could.
Okay.
Oh, but I saw Ashland Theater would be a recommendation.
Okay.
And local.
So, last year, you know, like for the entertainment stage, could someone really briefly describe what, what the entertainment stage will kind of look like? Like physically, the space?
It's the same, it's the same that we.
On the concrete?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because I remember last year Tom had purchased and provided the, like, decor.
Yeah, some blue banners, yeah.
Is, is this going to be something covered under the events budget this year, or, Tom, are you bringing back your?
Yeah, we hadn't talked about that, I mean, I can bring back my blue banners.
I think there could be more.
I know, it really does feel like it needs to, we need to dress the stage a little bit. So maybe that's a, thanks for bringing that up, See, that's a great idea. But with maybe some additional funds, maybe just something to kind of make that place look a little bit more like a, a space where performance is going to happen.
Okay.
It would be nice to have some, you know, like masking, theatrical legs, you know, something to block off even, you know, because how the, you know, there's the stage and then it curves around the backside facing the lake, you know, and be able to just kind of close off that side, because then performers can use, be behind there and then come out from behind. It kind of separates that space a little bit, that would be really helpful.
For them to get ready, or like for dancers to stretch, you know, like whatever it is.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, that's a, that's a great thought, and if, if we've got the money and the budget, it would be great to try and come up with something like that.
That would be nice.
Very nice.
Then we have to take out a hundred canvases.
We could make something without a pallets.
Make something with what?
Pallets.
With pallets? You could.
Use all the plywood left over from the Project Snowies.
Mm-hmm. The only other thing on this document that's in yellow, it's obviously not a decision today, but there are going to be two volunteers, or one to two, I would say, to help manage the lines or access to the face painting balloon artists while they're out there, they're not providing that, so we need to.
Need volunteers for a lot of things.
Yes, so.
Added to the list of.
Yes.
You know, a lot of great ice people did that.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, and it's, you know, they just need something to do.
And Lisa was great about getting us connected with North Haven Church, and they're very excited about helping us that day as well, so we should get quite a few volunteers.
Do we, she has listed here that they have the face painting and balloon art inside the pavilion as well as the community art project. I mean, I don't know if I like anything inside the pavilion, but.
But couldn't the face painter and balloon artists, I think they should be outside, wouldn't they?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping, can we?
We can discuss, I think that was based on a recommendation from Touch of Magic.
Okay.
To be inside, but I can have her touch back with them. I wasn't part of those phone calls, so I'll revisit that with Carrie and Touch of Magic.
Call Lori, Lori.
Otherwise, I'd like ideas on how to get more people in that space and knowing that there is stuff in there.
Okay.
But I think, because, you know, they dress up like clowns, right? I mean, I assume they're going to do that when they do the face painting and balloons.
I don't.
Yeah, they do normally, but, so I assume they would do that, and then if, that just kind of helps add to the environment outside, I think. That's why I think it'd be. I think having them outside would be great, but maybe, you know, what they need is like a tent, you know, so maybe if we had like a. I think having them outside would be great, but maybe, you know, what they need is like a tent, you know, so maybe if we had like a pop, I saw there were a couple of tents that were added on the budget, because I know that there's like, I assume that was for some of these like, community outreach type people, that's what the purpose of those tents were?
The tents are for the entertainers, so they have a place to put their stuff, change, all of that. Good stuff.
So maybe potentially another one, if, I mean, if the hurleys want that, where they could be underneath, but yeah, I don't know, I mean, I know that, I've seen them, like Lori would set up face painting down at the car show, and she's just got, you know, a ten by ten. Or they could bring a tent.
Yeah, maybe that's the strategy we go with, if they will bring that. Okay. Okay.
Anything else on that that you need answers from us?
Nope, I think that's it. It's a good idea.
Yeah, when are they gonna add more buses? Yeah.
Aren't they talking about the old or blue line coming through?
Well, I just need them to have more, more buses available, because like, the last one going to Minneapolis is, is like, doesn't fit the schedule, and then the last one coming back is too early.
Yeah.
So you gotta, you gotta really fit your schedule to the, to the bus route.
Just don't work a whole day time.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so anything else? I think, did you want to cover the, well, that's in reports from staff, so any other old business, or any old business, Sarah?
Nope.
Okay, reports from staff, so then the budget recap and then the event calendar for ACC.
Yeah, so I put the budget report in there just based on your recommendation to have it each month. Only thing that's changed so far, which is out of the event budget, is the paint night, so that's how much we're gonna spend over the course of the year on the four nights that we have hired out an artist, so that's the only change on that one. And then, looking at the other attachment is the event planner, just wanted to get that out there so people can start marking their calendars. Music, with the music in the park, car show, those are ones that we are just having the art cards, we don't really have anything to do with the actual event, just for the new people, so you guys can kind of get the picture there. And then for the paint alongs, we just need at least one person to be there, kind of managing it. Well, I'll end up giving you guys the check to give to the artists, so you can watch over that. And then the festival and the parade, like we do every year, but just wanted to get that to you guys, so you can start looking at your calendars. Yeah.
Just really quickly, as far as like the last paint night with Svetta?
Mm-hmm.
For consistency, would it be paint along with Svetta?
Yes. But yeah, as long as there's no questions or anything, that's all I have.
I kind of can't believe, I mean, I'm just going through all of this stuff that we're doing, and our plan is almost all green already. I mean, we've just, we've already, we've done a lot.
Could I?
A lot of it is complete already.
Could I ask about, oh, never mind.
Okay, so we got that covered, so then anything else, Sarah? So we'll go on to reports from commissioners. So Sharon, anything you want to cover? Nothing? Lisa? Carrie?
No.
Okay, I don't have anything. C?
I do not have anything.
And Amanda?
No, nothing.
Laura?
Nothing for me.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody for your work. C especially, once again, coming through, you did a ton of work over the past month, so thank you for everything you did. And Amanda also, just a ton of work, so thanks for all of that. I would just say, so subcommittee or sub-work group leaders, if you could reach out to your new members, Laura or Sharon, over the next couple of weeks, and maybe get together just to, if nothing else, just to get everybody up to speed. And then also planning for whatever else is coming up next with your subgroup, and then us mural group, we need to get together too. And so then we're going on to reports from our council liaison, Lisa.
All right. So there is a request for a potential project for you all to consider. And I had mentioned this a little bit last year, but we have blending turtles that are endangered, and they're coming off of, out of their habitat and onto Holloway. And there's a significant amount of them that are dying, like well over like thirty-six last year. Well, yeah, and so there, there's a request to see if there's a campaign that can be done by this council.
Could, I don't know what we have rights to, but can we do a street mural in that area?
I think it's a MinDOT road, but that's something we can look into.
Good question.
Okay, well, think about that. We had a council retreat, and some of the topics that came up as a priority, and this isn't in order necessarily, but the community center, the EDA, code enforcement, capital improvement plan, and implementation of park and rec plan. So those were some of the top topics to address in this next year. Council also was invited to the history museum, and we kind of had an open forum, and people asked us questions and told us, you know, their experiences, and so that's usually an annual event that we started doing last year. We received a grant a while ago for the, for Eleventh Street, for a sidewalk, so we'll be, our city engineer will be getting bids for a sidewalk from Ariel all the way to McKnight.
Yeah, is that gonna happen this year, Lisa?
I believe so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd be sidewalk on both sides of that street.
For, yeah, most of it, yeah. And then council amended the arts and culture bylaws to expand the definition of student, so we have that all good to go. And then council voted to amend the 2024 budget to add one FTE to fill the role of the investigator who was assigned to the BCA. We also have a special meeting coming up. We didn't have a meeting this last Tuesday, but, because of the election, but there's one coming up on Thursday, March fourteenth at four P.M., and that one will be about the community center. We should be hearing from our consultants at Wold Architects, kind of preliminary information or information that they've gathered. We'll also have a representative from the Sine Foundation. He is kind of the operations guy over there, and they are very successful and have made a very successful community center, so he'll be probably somebody who will be presenting if he is available.
So this special meeting at the community center next Thursday, that's open to the public?
It's a special meeting, I believe so. Mm-hmm. I don't see why not.
So on the, so on, that's next Thursday?
Is it there, or is it here?
I think it's here, but I don't know for sure. Let me check my calendar. Sorry?
Oh, I was saying like it's, it's here, but it's about the community center versus like being at the community center.
It says council chambers on my calendar.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, I'll take any questions or comments, and yeah, that's kind of what I got.
That's at four P.M.?
Yep.
Okay.
It was three thirty.
Is that to discuss how to use the grant funding?
I think it's first just getting a little bit more information, so getting a little bit better understanding of what Wold has been doing, and that's largely kind of an assessment of the building, where they're at from an architectural, architectural and engineering standpoint. They did some community engagement and stakeholder engagement, though that's not really like their normal wheelhouse, so they'll probably present on that as well. And then, let's see, yeah, and then we'll probably discuss and hear a little bit more about how the Conway Center is successful.
Yeah, it seems tough, you know, when they, when they put that last update about the community center in the newsletter, just the way the whole thing was framed, it kind of seemed like, well, there's no way to make this work, you know?
Yeah, I would say it's a bit misleading because we haven't had much conversation around that, and I'd say it kind of was based off of a model that is kind of the old model, a generic model, and so, and then it used rates from previous. I mean, there, there are ways, different ways to look at it, and I think it didn't include the potential of revenue and other aspects of it.
Yeah, I thought those numbers were kind of weird. I'm like, where did those numbers come from? They, they didn't, they left me with more questions than answers, I guess.
Yeah.
So, that's the one question that I would have, is how would we get information on how it will affect those sense taxpayers, like for the long term, like what, what we'd be responsible for in accepting the grant and what the long-term picture is?
Yeah, so part of the grant is for us to, it's bonding, it's legislative funding. We got four and a half million dollars, so that is supposed to be about a hundred and twenty-five percent of the, the life of the building. So that puts us out about thirty-plus years to maintain the building and keep it going, and so I think it would be a capital improvement plan, definitely, to help understand a little bit more. The architects will have some estimates around upgrades, and then there, one of the reasons we're having Brandon, is his name from the Sine Foundation come, is because their model works, and it's not just the model that we have had for the last, you know, whatever, it's not just a gym. There are other components to it, and so some of the ways in which they're successful is they get public-private sponsorship, so they have Delta Dental paid for like an equity building, and so they're continuing to actually expand. And they actually even bust some of our kids here in our community to that community center. Conway Center, it's like the east side. Yeah, but yeah, so there's a lot of different ways to look at revenue. I would say most community centers today look at it from, I think, you can have like, I think Woodbury Central Park had about twenty different funds to remodel there. So there's just a lot more to look at in terms of what the possibilities are.
Well, and what did you say, four and a half million dollars?
Four and a half million dollars.
I'm sorry, that is a shit ton of money to get, and I remember when you were talking about going in front of legislature to ask for that, and that, that is no joke, that is nothing to sneeze at, so thank you for securing that for our city. That'd be so nice to have a resource like that available for kids and families and for people.
Really, the problem is four and a half million in today's construction dollars is like nothing. You can't get a toilet built for that much in San Francisco.
They're getting your toilets.
Yeah, and that's part of what Wold has done. They've done like a deferred maintenance plan, so that will help kind of inform that a little bit.
Great. Anything else?
Nope.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, item twelve, new commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Sharon makes a, Sharon has made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Thank you, Laura. All those in favor of adjourn, say aye. Aye, opposed, meeting is adjourned at whatever time it is.